I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Policy needs mean the order. First, we have the consent consent agenda. Anybody else have anything on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda has presented and authorized the mayor to sign. I'll second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Next comes from the public. No, nobody's here. Okay.
We're very popular today.
Yeah, I'm okay with all that. All right. Um, moving on to doing business, twenty twenty-five annual bonus. Stephanie's assures, Jessica's assures.
Okay. Um, so last year for council approval, we did a holiday annual bonus for employees. Um, full-time employees received three hundred, part-time employees received one hundred fifty, and library aides received seven thousand dollars. Um, after speaking at the work study meeting last week, um, council expressed interest in approving an increase in the bonus for employees. So an increase of roughly fifty dollars for full-time employees and part-time employees and leading aides at seventy-five dollars. Um, the holiday bonus can be fully covered by the employee benefits fund, um, and the preliminary cost estimate is provided upon the memo. You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
When does the bonus go out?
Um, it'll be, I think, I believe it's the nineteenth of November. It's right between our two November payrolls.
I know we've purposely tried to get it out before block Friday.
Yes, and um, obviously Thanksgiving as well.
Well, I'm glad that we, I think it used to be that we didn't really plan. We just kind of had it run with it. So good job, Stephanie. And why we have the ability to do this and it was important. Anybody else have any questions on it or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve processing of the two thousand twenty-five annual bonus through payroll in the following amounts. Three hundred and fifty dollars for full-time, one hundred and seventy-five for part-time, and seventy-five dollars for library aides.
A second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. Next, the updates to the Paola Industrial Park covenants and restrictions and its residential number twenty-two-five-zero-one-nine.
So the original evidence and restrictions for the industrial park properties were adopted in nineteen ninety-seven. Um, since then, we've adopted the land development ordinance. Before it went off the pump plant, uh, and the original restrictions were very restrictive. To spur some development out there, we proposed some amendments to them. Um, they're all pretty small amendments, but they help boost up the process and make it real easier for developers to go in out there. Um, keeps a few things in-house with staff approval, um, and short setbacks. So we went over everything at the work study meeting last week. I haven't changed anything since then, so exactly the same as what's in the packet.
Anybody have questions on this one or comments?
What we talked about the other day mentioned, basically, we're taking the approval process or changes on it from literally months to days or hours.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that regardless will have to go for council approval. Um, I mean, development throughout town, uh, any big development has to go through site plan regardless. Uh, but this would take, yeah, those, those smaller improvements. Um, and things that are typically approved at the staff level back down to that staff level. Um, so sheds, fences, signs, landscaping, those kinds of things. Um, it would, yeah, it would shorten it down to within a week normally.
Good. Good work on this, Munch.
Thank you.
There's a lot of things that we've just done what there's always been. And I know we've updated quite a few different things that sure encode and stuff like that, so should streamline it and help it make be more uniform.
Yeah.
Anybody doesn't have any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two-five-zero-one-nine amending the Paola Industrial Park covenants and restrictions.
I hope so. Get that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
That's a first.
Really, right?
Really excited about that. All right. Just another thing that we have updated, which is good, the sidewalk cost share that we talked about at the work session also, resolution twenty-two-five dash year two zero.
Yep. So the original sidewalk cost share program was started in two thousand eleven. It's been used off and on since its adoption, but uh, at least since I've been here, I haven't seen the kind of usage on it. Um, so I wanted to go through and get some more clear-cut instructions on it, um, as well as make it a little bit easier for residents to use, uh, some changes. Now, uh, residents will be able to complete the work themselves if they want. Uh, this will waive the permit fees for all sidewalks placed exclusively in the right-of-way. Uh, which should help whether they use the program or not, help incentivize it a little bit. Um, and then this also allows for the construction of brick sidewalks if owners prefer that. And since work study, I did put a new bullet point in there specifying that.
Appreciate that.
Um, we actually already, perfect timing, have had one application for it.
Nice.
Um, and it's a homeowner wanting to do the work himself, which actually brought up a good point. We didn't have anything specifically addressed in those regulations for that. So I added in a couple bullets on it, um, just kind of outlining the process and what we would do, uh, would be to reimburse fifty percent of the material costs instead of, you know, you don't have labor in there. So, uh, those will be taken kind of case by case. I'll figure out actually what's the tier of the cost would be and make sure that their quote is, is, uh, within reason. Uh, so yeah, excited that we already have a, an application for it and, uh, hopefully we have several more. I did also get a chance to talk to you today about that. I did also take the September, uh, cutoff out of there just because I think we can take a case by case. Um, some of these, we did that because it's typically ninety days for the maximum on work to be performed, and then we have another forty-five days after those forty-five days to get a check to them. Um, so it would help with budgeting a little bit, but I think a lot of these projects, when homeowners are ready to do a sidewalk, they're ready to come in, get their permit, get started, patients for the year, so, um. They're still welcome then to apply that next year, um, or we'll probably hold that application then just until the next budget year. Um, so I did take that out of there, but other than that, everything's stayed the same.
And maybe before, if it was allowed, that they could do the work themselves but not known.
Yeah.
It may have been a hindrance if they thought they had to hire it out, so maybe now it'll be more educational in that say.
Yeah, as I tried to spell out everything as much as I could, um, in the packet, we're going to display those there, you know, waiting here as well.
Very good. Anybody have any other questions or comments on this one?
This is a great way to prove the city, or with them, I think, makes a lot of sense for your work.
It's a little bit more buy-in too, I think, with the residents saying city hall, then there's, there's a little bit more on Facebook, I imagine. People want to know you a little more, which helps.
Yeah.
Big fan.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero-two-zero amending the city of payroll and sidewalk cost share program. A second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
Motion passed. All right, purchase of back truck.
All right, well, as we discussed in the work study, uh, we've been having issues with our current back truck and have been looking for some time to purchase a newer one to replace it. Red equipment has a twenty-twenty backcon that's coming off at least to the city of Shenew. That shouldn't be available in the event that we were able to travel to shoot to look at the truck and see it in use and then once that equipment gets back from the lease, they'll go through it to ensure that everything is in good working order. Uh, so we're looking to purchase the truck from Red Equipment for the amount of three hundred and forty thousand. We have the funds to purchase the truck outright through the use of our roof account and street funds. So staff recommends approving the purchase of the twenty-twenty backcon truck from Red Equipment in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Well, bottom habit.
Well, what year's the one we got now? It's probably in here, two thousand twelve, one twelve.
Yeah.
And that's the one that uses the old EGR.
EGR.
Yeah.
Which is, okay.
And we did finally get it back. I think we discussed in work setting, we had it in the shop again, uh, since we got it back after that repair. It's set all codes again. So right now, Tony's looked at it and hasn't got it to repeat, but he's notified in my truck that it's done it again and they're using it till it happens again.
Right. Sounds like we're on borrowed time probably.
And then the old truck, we're just gonna sell it.
Yes.
Away.
Perpleaus.
Good luck.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty back truck from Red Equipment in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand dollars, Ms. Mayor.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. Next, we have the lease financing bids for, um, resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-two-one.
Um, we did purchase the, uh, new police cars this year. We got the, um, four cars and all the upfitting completed, so we then had an amount to go to the banks. Um, and get their, um, totals for lease. We did check with all five banks. Um, Lane Mark was the only one that didn't, uh, put in a bid. There, there was quite a range for the bids. Um, first option was four point two four, uh, for Security Bank and Security Bank were both five point two five. And Great Southern was six point four nine. These are all forty-eight month, um, annual payments. So, uh, they will, the governing body needs to, uh, pass a resolution authorizing the lease purchase agreement, and then we can move forward with whichever one you choose.
Okay. Um, anybody got any other questions on this one?
Stephanie, what, what, you, and then show it on here. Do you have any idea yet, or are we still trying to follow up the payments in a beat?
Um, I don't know the payment amounts. We did end up, it was a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So we already had a, a payment scheduled in this year's budget, so we are able to take that off. And I think there was a little arc of money set aside for vehicles, so, so we got it down to a hundred and seventy-three thousand. That'll be over the four years.
They're on the road, chief court, they're on the road. They look great.
They look really nice. Yeah, they look good.
Definitely get a lot of comments on them.
Probably looks less nice if you're pulled over by.
Well.
Still look good.
Oh, that looks good when they're getting pulled. How you look at it?
You just send the eye of the.
That's for the word dang the, the vehicle should look good, right?
All right, is there a motion on the bits?
I.
Have you done?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the lease financing bid from first option bank and approve resolution number two oh-two-five dash oh-two-one, authorizing the execution of a lease purchase agreement.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right. It's good to pay for him, so it's already on the road.
They're recording them now.
Right.
That'd be our.
All right, the proposed Paola Municipal Court fee increase. All right, which has nothing to do with the new vehicles, by that point we're out.
Great timing.
Blackout.
Thank you, buddy. Uh, Judge Schultz is requesting to raise the fines for municipal ordinance traffic infraction. Traffic infraction fine schedule has not been increased since two thousand and six. The intention behind the request is to hopefully help deter the frequency of these infractions due to the lower fee associated with them. Post-increase will also bring the payable fines more in line with surrounding communities. Um, the municipal judge shall establish a schedule of fines which shall be imposed for municipal ordinance violations that are classified as ordinance traffic infractions. Also, the municipal judge may establish a schedule of fines which shall be imposed by the violation of certain other ordinances. Any fines so established shall be within the minimum maximum allowable fine established by the governing body. So Judge Schultz established the proposed traffic infraction fine schedule, and the governing body can approve it. The proposal, updated traffic infraction fine schedule, um, has been attached. And staff recommends approving the updated traffic infraction fine schedule provided by Judge Schultz.
Did we previously have to send an amount per ticket to the state? Is that, it's just more now?
No, it's.
No, same amount.
Same amount.
The twenty, you're talking about the twenty-three fifty.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
It's been there.
Yep.
That's the same amount.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that amount change based on the ticket or does it?
No.
It's the same for everything, right? Okay.
Okay.
I did have a great time bringing through this fine schedule, so. There, there are some fun ones on there.
Yes, it, uh, I mean, obviously, you see where, what we enforce the most, speed is, is one of those, but there is a whole number of infractions that we could enforce. So.
Pedestrians soliciting riders or business, would that be like panhandling or some variant?
Yeah, some variant thereof, yeah.
Then pedestrians to use right half of crosswalks, that, to keep with the flow of traffic. I, I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, so basically the jaywalking, yeah, in the, um, designated intersections, um. So the public has not, or the, the public driving has an idea of where these people are going across again.
I mean, the, the speed is the main one issue. I, I, I did read through all of them.
But the, the ones that are twenty, over twenty over, right?
Yeah, the ones that were increased.
Yeah.
Ten and over were not, or ten to twenty.
Okay.
And it is overtaking school buses also, received a hundred dollar bounty.
Mm-hmm.
Bigger than.
I think that, if you're, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, it's, I mean, it's almost twenty years old, it sounds like, so it's probably time to look at it anyways. But I'm glad that she thought it through and is posting on the ones that are really, really disappointing.
City payable was the lowest for most of them, so.
All right. If you're going over twenty over in our jurisdiction, you probably have a.
Let's hope it's an emergency, definitely.
Yeah. All right, anybody else have any questions or comments on this?
Uh, just, you know, they're, they're, uh, you want to have the court, there, there's a class associated with everything we do, of course, and, and running the court and have our officers out there and, and do that. So this, this, they're, so they're, they're associated with it, so. I'm glad it was a two thousand and six and yeah, I think it's.
Long overdue, probably. I'm glad we don't raise them just to raise them, but sometimes it makes sense. So you have any other questions and how does that motion?
I move to approve the updated traffic infractions fine schedule provided by Judge Schultz.
I'll second that.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. Next, it's just the housekeeping for the November city council meeting date. Right? Nothing to explain. Because the council meeting falls on Wednesday, we're gonna move it to the Monday instead of that Tuesday.
Yes, ma'am.
And we talked about it and everybody was okay except for one of you.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be there.
Not gonna be there. All right, everybody else is still good though for the pen? Okay. All right, is there a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to move the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting to November tenth, a Monday, twenty twenty-five at six P M. in the Paola Justice Center.
I will second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right. Next is the confirmation of notification of the end of filing. Stephanie emailed all of us.
Yeah, I just need you to acknowledge that I emailed you since we do this, um, annually. This just happened to be filed before we had the bond pass, so the bond has now been filed with Emma.
Self-explanatory, anybody have any other questions on that? If not, is there a motion?
I move to acknowledge that in compliance with the continuing disclosure policy, the city clerk did provide to the governing body written confirmation that the general obligation bond series two thousand twenty-five was electronically filed on the Emma system on October third, twenty twenty-five.
I will second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. Next, we have the, the danger of structure at nine East Chippewa. This is also a resolution.
I'll read the, I'll read this one directly from the memo since there's a, a lot of Kansas statutes involved with it. Uh, so the process for a municipality requiring repair or removal of structures which are no longer fit for human life or which constitute a hazard to public health, safety, or welfare is established under KSA twelve seventeen fifty through KSA twelve seventeen fifty-six. The initial step of the process is for the governing body to review a report prepared by the enforcing officer. After reviewing the report, the governing body by resolution may set a date, time, and place which uh, at which time all parties in interest may appear and present evidence why the structure should not be condemned or ordered to be repaired or demolished. Per KSA twelve seventeen fifty, the enforcing officer shall perform a preliminary investigation of the structure following the investigation, and if the investigation discloses a basis for such charges, the enforcing officer shall prepare a report of such filing and submit it to the governing body. Building Inspector Trevor Buckles has conducted the preliminary investigation and a formal report of the property located at nine East Chippewa Street for the city council to review. After reviewing the submitted investigation and supporting documents, the governing body may deem the condition of the structure to be unsafe or dangerous. If the governing body deems the structure to be unsafe or dangerous, then a public hearing shall be set by resolution. Resolution sets the date, time, and place at which time all parties of interest may appear and present evidence why the structure should not be condemned or and/or repaired or demolished. Due to following KSA twelve seventeen fifty-two publication requirements, resolution would set a public hearing for December ninth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. at the Paola Justice Center. As an alternative, the governing body may find that the investigative report and documentation or effect of conditions of the structure does not constitute an approving resolution point twenty-five dash zero-two-two to set a public hearing for the property. With your guys' packet is the statement from Inspector Buckles, um, detailing his inspection of the property. Uh, just a couple things noted in that, uh, inspection are the roof covering has completely deteriorated and appears to be unable to stop intrusion of water from getting in to the framing below. The framing is rotten, which can compromise the structural integrity of roof as a whole. Base sheds and soffits have completely rotted away and are allowing weather entrance into the roof. The foundation is failing, evidenced by large sections of rocks. Foundation completely unsecured and falling out from underneath the house. Uh, large sections of the foundation are leaning out far enough to separate the siding from the house. The house has been vacant for multiple years with no utilities connected, including a way to heat and cool with the interior of the house, which also leads to deterioration. Uh, and there is an area around the window air conditioning unit that is open to the elements and animals to get inside the house. There are missing gutters throughout the house, which will allow water to collect around the foundation, therefore making the foundation fail even further on. Staff's recommendation is approval of the resolution to set the public hearing for the infrastructure.
Good. Anyone getting in touch with this on?
I have not. I did actually. So I reached out originally, um, so the listed agent for the LLC that owns it, uh, he responded and said that he wasn't the agent anymore. They had changed. Put me in touch with somebody else. I never heard back from him. We sent out certified mail notice. Didn't hear back from that. Uh, I did go to the register of deeds and check the latest deed info to make sure it was up to date. And they have added another LLC in there that's not listed online. Checked that owner's information, and that owner I haven't reached out to yet just because that was within the last week.
Hmm.
Uh, but they will also receive notice of the public hearing as well.
Okay.
Um, I checked with the Missouri Secretary of State on the original LLC. And they confirmed that there's no, not been any changes as far as a registered agent for that LLC, so. There was, there was a pending, um, document update on their website, but a woman I spoke to said that, but mistake, so.
Are they current with their property taxes?
Uh.
Or do you have a question on that?
Yeah. Right.
Never a fun process, but.
Unnecessary.
Glad that this appears to be a good candidate for the process, so.
Yeah, and I mean, we, we try to give the property owners plenty of time and contact and notice before we get to this point. I've, I've been talking to um, an agent for this company for three years now, uh, that I've told him to get it fixed up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then it's just got to the point where I don't get any contact anymore. Unfortunately, that's where we're at.
Probably time to move forward. Anybody else have any questions? Now, is there a motion on this resolution?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero-two-two, setting the public hearing to be held on December ninth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. at the Paola Justice Center, eight oh-five North Pearl Street, Paola, Kansas, six zero one.
And I will second that.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, thank you. All right, staff reports. Chief verdict, since you were forced to sit in the corner, I'm gonna start with you. Do you have anything?
Um, it's a couple of days, we, since our last meeting, um, people, what it's, it's, it was a response, um, that's significant, it applies, then, parts of the extrication of the patient, and then we had a little tank battery fire out west of town near Wellsville that, um, that five different agencies on and, um, utilized, uh, several hundred gallons of foam on. And we did have some bunker gear that was contaminated, um, in the incident, the county's going to submit to the company's insurance, um, for reimbursement of our, our foam and our, our bunker gear from now to, to all be covered in that. Uh, with, um, October being Fire Prevention Week, we've conducted, um, eleven station tours and food presentations outside the, the station and, um, so big number of kids, uh, that we've seen over the last month, they've, um, good turnout with that, so good to be back on all that.
All right. So I, this is gonna seem really random, but there may be the Christmas story. All that snow is firefighter foam or mashed potato flakes. Just so you know. I went to the museum there and I was like, man, I wonder how expensive that was versus they were planning on real snow and it didn't happen. So they had used. So they had used firefighter foam.
Nice.
All right, Jessica.
We have our annual employee wellness event tomorrow that we're hosting at the fire station. So it's a big event for all of our employees. Big fun right now. And then getting ready before renewal season.
She's Corbin.
We had our kids' fall festival this last Saturday, a decent turnout. First time back in several years, so we were happy to, happy to see that. Thanks for all the staff members that brought their families out. So it was fun to see everybody.
The weather was good.
Yeah, weather was perfect. Yeah.
Brett?
The work on the five hundred block of East Shawnee is starting tomorrow, so should be doing the tear out and prep this week, hopefully concrete start on Monday for the curb and gutter and get that moving and the punch list items on the dam have all been approved, so hopefully we can wrap that up pretty quick.
Very good. Mitch?
We're up to four hundred and forty-nine permits so far, so about a couple months left and trucking along. They have a slow down, so it's good. We will have planning commission next week. We'll have the preliminary site plan for Codyo. And then we should be getting a flat C U P and site plan application for some development in Paola crossings.
Cool.
So hopefully get it tomorrow and that'll go on next month, so we'll have to do news media publications for the public hearing, but be good developments, pick it up.
Yeah. It's good. Randy?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing. Stephanie?
Just remind you of the chamber dinners on Thursday for the picnic.
All right. J R, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing today.
Nothing. Anthony?
No, I don't have anything.
Just a reminder that advanced voting starts tomorrow for the local elections. I don't know, it's been a huge line in November, but sometime, I'm always afraid that, like, what if something comes up and November fourth is crazy? So I think it's nice that we can get in early if we want, so. I know the county clerk has a flyer. They're staying late a couple nights, but I can't remember which ones, but starts tomorrow. All right, now we have an executive session. And J R, how long do you think?
Mayor, I was thinking about ten minutes with the council to discuss the results of their evaluations as a council as a whole. And then would simply, would ask that the city manager join us for the last twenty minutes, thirty minutes altogether.
Thirty minutes total. All right. So we'll reconvene at seven, we'll say seven oh four. So whenever you, whoever makes a motion, make sure you say seven oh four then.
On the clock. I move, the, I move city council resets into executive session to discuss evaluation for the city manager, for the city manager pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. The meeting shall include the mayor, the council, and the city manager. The regular meeting shall convene in the municipal courtroom at seven thirty, no, no, excuse me, seven oh four.
I second that motion.
McMahon.
Bye.
Hugo.
Bye.
Brown.
Bye.
Shield.
Hi.
All right, motion passed.
I guess I don't have anything prepared, Rick.
A second.
McMahon.
Bye.
Hugo. All right, Brown.
All right.
All right. Next, the salary.
Well, I guess I don't have anything prepared, Rick. So I move to give a cola increase and full merit for its invention. I second that motion.
She's ready.
Sorry.
McMahon.
Bye.
Hugo.
Bye.
Brown.
Bye.
Shields.
Bye.
All right. Thank you. Great discussion. Thanks for everybody doing the work for the evaluation is important. And thank you to JR for cleaning it up.
Thanks to the council. They put a lot of effort and work in into their evaluations very, very well with narratives. Except by me, but.
I will say it's not a fun process, but it was a very professionally well ran. So thank you. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess that's it. Somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
McMahon.
Bye.
Hugo.
Bye.
Brown.
Bye.
Shields.
Bye.
All right, me adjourned.